Okay, good evening, everybody. It's 6 o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll begin with the invocation led by Councilmember Roberto, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Smith. I mean Vice Mayor Smith, sorry. Please rise as you're able.
We gather tonight grateful for your blessings and the promise of a new year. While the nights are long and cold, we know that with each passing day, your light warms us as the days get longer. While we reflect on all of our blessings, let us remember those who are in need. Lead us to turn away from division and plant the seeds of peace in us. Under your spirits' care, let your love and compassion blossom in each of us. Open our hearts and our hands to seek solutions together. Give us the courage to find paths of collaboration and not separation. May your harvest heal those who are sick, feed those who are hungry, and warm those who are cold. We ask that you grant us wisdom, patience, and understanding in our deliberations tonight so that our actions may be worthy of your continued blessings. Amen.
Please face the flag.
The flag is stood by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, would you please call roll?
Councilman Fugit. Councilman Helsley. Councilwoman McKenzie.
Here.
Councilwoman Parker.
Here.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Here.
Councilwoman Roberto.
Here.
Councilwoman Singh.
Vice Mayor Smith.
And Councilman Thomas.
All members present, mayor.
Okay. Next item is the approval of minutes. But, Mr. Johnson, I understand you have something to bring to council's attention about a previous minute that have been approved.
Yes, mayor, thank you. For the November 26 meeting minutes, I need to make or suggest a correction to a motion to postpone for that agenda ordinances 12H, 12I, and 12J. It was recorded in the minutes for two weeks, but it was actually a motion to postpone it to this meeting, which they are on our agenda. So I would just ask for a correction to those minutes.
Second. Okay, motion's been made to correct it per our city recorder's description. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, is there a motion to approve the minutes from Tuesday, December 10?
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, are there any items to be withdrawn for this evening? Okay, are any items to be postponed? Any items requested to be added by motion? Is there a motion on the consent agenda? Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, time now for my mayor's report. Happy New Year, everybody. Good to see you all. And thank you and members of the public who are here in person or watching electronically for being accommodating as we are in this new space. The small assembly room is where we'll be meeting for the next two months or so, while Public Billing Authority makes some renovations to the large assembly room. So that is why we are here. So as we celebrate the beginning of 2025, I do want to thank everyone from the city who helped to make New Year's Eve at the Sun Sphere a huge success. I was able to be down there for the dropping of the ball, and it was a big turnout. I remember not too long ago when we moved from the celebrations at Market Square down to World's Fair Park, and it seemed like a big space for not that many people. But it was quite full, and about 10,000 people, we estimate, were ringing in the New Year together. So that takes a lot of planning by our special events teams, our first responders, of course, staff at public service crews, and, you know, it takes a big team effort. So thank you to everyone who made it a safe New Year's Eve. I also want to, as was mentioned in the invocation, you know, keep our vulnerable members of our community in our minds and also in our actions. I want to thank all the people and community partners who are coming together to help stand up the warming centers in our community. Just yesterday, CAT announced that they would provide free rides for people who need to get to the warming centers when they are open this week. So I also want to thank Knox County. In partnership with the Joint Office of Housing Stability, we are providing staffing, the security, and helping to coordinate the volunteer and donation efforts. If you haven't, if you want more details about the warming centers and how to help, go to knoxtnhousing.org. Quick reminder, those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forum should sign up with the city recorder before 4:00 p.m. Please do not use profanity, and when speaking to specific agenda items, please remember to stay on topic. Robert's Rules of Order state that remarks must be germane to the question ahead of the assembly. That is, statements must have bearing on whether the pending motion should be adopted. Those who fail to adhere to these rules may be ruled out of order and asked to step away from the podium. For those who are listening, please note you may not disrupt a public meeting from the audience. Those who do may be asked to leave. Thank you in advance for everyone's respect for these rules. And that concludes my mayor's report. Are there any reports of council members? Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, mayor. Two items. One is I want to thank the city recorder, Mr. Johnson, and also the rest of council staff. It takes a lot to move rooms and move people in here and operate in the city's business. So I want to show my appreciation for council staff for that. Thank you. And the second is Thursday at 5:30. From 5:30 to 7:00, there'll be a drop-in event at South Knox Elementary to discuss the Sevier Avenue Streetscape Project. Members of the public are welcome to attend for the full time or just drop in and ask as many questions as you want of city staff. That's Thursday from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at South Knox Elementary. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports from council members? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item eight.
Eight A is a resolution confirming the reappointment of Dr. Megan Brown to the Knoxville Animal Control Board.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight B is a resolution approving the reappointments of Jay Price to serve as the city appointee to the Knoxville Knox County Regional Solid Waste Board.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight C is a resolution confirming the appointment of Cynthia Manning-Durle to the Civil Service Merit Board.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I do want to recognize Ms. Manning-Durle is here. Ms. Manning-Durle, if you could just stand up and thank you for being willing to serve on this important committee. Appreciate it.
Eight D is a resolution confirming the appointment of Dr. Kevin Parks to the Knoxville Tree Board.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight E is a resolution reappointing Dusty Brock to the City of Knoxville Audit Committee.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine A is an ordinance to change the street name of Patton Street to Willow Avenue between Willow Avenue and East Summit Hill Drive, City of Knoxville, applicant 6th District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine B is an ordinance approving the request of Maddox Construction Company Incorporated for an amendment to the North City Sector Plan from Neighborhood Commercial and General Commercial to General Commercial. We're property located at 100 East Inskip Drive, 5th District.
Yes, mayor, the three items here are all the same subject matter, so I would like to consolidate them.
So you're making a motion to consolidate item nine B, C, and D?
Yes.
That's, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion to consolidate? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion to consolidate is approved. And Councilmember Thomas, do you have a motion on the consolidated motion?
Yes, move to approve.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
Just a brief comment for my friends in Inskip. The plan for this site is a HVAC-related business. Nothing will be stored outside. No work will be done outside. The plan calls for sidewalks and tasteful landscaping. The applicant followed very good protocol by meeting with both me and the Neighborhood Association for input and suggestions. The consensus from these meetings was that this would be a good use of this property, which has been underutilized and somewhat blighted for some time, and that a tweaking of the zoning from CN1 Neighborhood Commercial to CG1 General Commercial would be appropriate. It looks like there will be very minimal impact, negative at all, against the neighborhood, and it offers some amenities that we won't have. So I would ask to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine E is an ordinance to change the base and classification of property located at 7057 Pine Grove Road from CH1 District to IG District to CH2 District. Sharon Therner, applicant 4th District.
Motion made to approve. Is there a second? And seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine F is an ordinance to change the base and classification of property located at 901 Kermit Drive from CH1 District to CH2 District. Tim Graham, applicant 5th District.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine G is an ordinance to change the base and classification for property located at 6521 Vance Road from RN1 District to RN2 District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged. Mohamed Abbas Ust Properties LLC, applicant 3rd District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, there's one person who signed up to speak in favor of this item. Ellen Zaviska? Ms. Zaviska, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council. Thank you. You have to turn the button on for the mic to go on. It's at the base of the mic. Okay? You got it.
All right. Thank you so much. Ellen Zaviska, 3118 Fairview Street. I appreciate the opportunity to address all of you tonight. I know some of you from the time when I served on the staff of City-County Planning, which is a position that I resigned in 2023. I'm speaking tonight as a member of the board for Yes Knoxville, which is a nonprofit dedicated to increasing opportunities and options for housing, transportation, and public spaces in Knoxville. Yes Knoxville supports this project because it brings vitally needed homes to our community. More homes of all types are very much needed to counter the crisis in housing affordability that Knoxville faces. A great deal of housing has been added to the city, of course, in the last year, and more is on the way. And we certainly commend the many efforts of this council and this administration to support that. But the crisis, of course, is not over. Just last month, Compass highlighted a report on the cost of rental housing in the region. It's worth noting that more than half of households in Knoxville are renters, and they are particularly vulnerable to housing costs, to rising costs in housing. This report found that more than half of renters in the region were moderately or severely cost-burdened, which is significantly higher than the national average. It also found that the share of renters here who are severely cost-burdened, that is, they're paying more than half of their income to rent, that that share in Knoxville is more than double the national average. This speaks to the recent rapid increases in housing costs, especially compared with incomes that have not kept pace. Furthermore, there's research recently from the Pew Charitable Trusts finding that strong correlation exists between increasing the supply of housing and bringing down or leveling off of housing costs. They also find that places that fail to increase housing cost supply, those increased housing prices contribute to homelessness, which is certainly a problem here. As we speak tonight, as has been mentioned, the warming centers are opening up so that folks who are experiencing homelessness can stay warm tonight. That's a very important solution for these cold evenings, but it's not the best long-term solution for those folks. Of course, even in less extreme cases that don't lead to homelessness, rising rents lead to significant disruptions for families that can interfere with children's education, people maintaining their jobs, maintaining their community ties. Burdensome rents also force households to cut back on necessities like food and utilities. So in short, you know, we need more housing to help bring down costs, and every little bit helps. So we hope you will approve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Singh.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to thank my colleagues for taking a risk and trusting me on my knowledge of the district. I know this was kind of an atypical move, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven A is a resolution creating a task force to study Chapter 7.5, Article 2, rules of procedure, and also consider the possible creation of a charter review process and appointing the members of the task force.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, mayor. This has been a request of many council members over the past year or two to take a look at our rules and our charter on a reoccurring basis in a way, hopefully, that outlasts all of us. I think it's good governance, and everybody was generally in agreement. So now the hard work begins. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents to award a total amount not to exceed $60,000 in power Knox Workforce Readiness Grants to provide support and programming for youth and young adults to six community-based organizations in the city.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept a grant from the Tennessee Arts Commission Arts Pathways for Youth Success Grant in the amount of $25,000 to support the provision of arts-related programming to youth in East Knoxville.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Design and Construction Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $526,050 for the 2025 Curb Cuts Project.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with Gresham Smith for the Gay Street Bridge Repair Project, increasing the contract amount by $30,000 for a new total contract amount of $348,000.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, this item is designed to help streamline and expedite the repairs to the Gay Street Bridge. Like so many of us, I am impatient and frustrated that it isn't, you know, open already and repaired. However, safety has to come first. And when the state of Tennessee's top engineer deemed the structure closed, we are compelled to fix it and repair it before we can reopen it. And so that's what we're doing, and we're trying to go as fast as possible while also doing it right so we don't make mistakes and have to go back and do it again or have any kinds of structural issues. This additional money will be used to hire a construction advisor who will help navigate the specialized needs of a 100-year-old bridge, including helping to obtain the permits, specialized permits needed to perform the work. The contractor will ultimately reduce the time needed for repairs. Tom Claybo, Director of Engineering, is here if you have more detailed questions. All right, seeing no further questions, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with Rogers Group Incorporated for the 2024 Resurfacing Phase 2 Project, increasing the contract amount by $130,761.11 for a new total contract amount of $3,764,563.61.
Motion made to approve and seconded. I went out to Augusta Quarry to touch base on this project and see how things are going. And progress is being made, and I'm really encouraged by seeing that progress. I wanted to let you know that we can now see the changing rooms and the bathrooms. They're not done, but they're getting there. And there's going to be an expanded overlook, more accessible pedestrian paths. And my favorite thing is the new floating docks. Those have mostly been installed. They're looking really good. It's gonna, I couldn't get a firm date of when it's going to be reopened, but we're going to say summer. So when it's warm enough to swim, for those of us who swim in only warm weather, Augusta Quarry should be open by then. So I appreciate everybody's support for this. Any further questions or discussion? Oh, did we on eleven F? Oh, I'm sorry.
You're just proactive, it's fine.
Okay. What I said will go for the next one. Any further questions or discussion on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Sorry about that.
Eleven G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with Southern Constructors Incorporated for the Augusta Quarry Amendities Phase 2 Project, increasing the contract amount by $47,823.38 for a new total contract amount of $3,643,706.47.
Okay, motion made to approve and seconded. Thanks for understanding my mistake. But all those things I said a minute ago are true for this item. Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to award an amount not to exceed $75,000 in Historic Preservation Program Grant Funds to SRJ Investments LLC to support improvements to historic property located at 31013th Street within the limits of the city of Knoxville.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, Fort Sanders has lost a lot of its architecture and a lot of its historic buildings, but there's still some that, plenty there, actually worth saving. This is one of them. It actually serves not only a architectural and historical purpose, but it also is functional. It's one of the existing markets and some semblance of a grocery store inside the Fort Sanders community. So I totally approve of the expenditure of this, and I'm glad that we're still paying attention to some of those historic buildings in Fort Sanders. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Cornerstone Government Affairs Incorporated in the amount of $180,000 to provide governmental relations services for the city of Knoxville.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, as you know, we've been working with Cornerstone Government Relations for the last several years. They provide a team to support our city, and they are subject matter experts for various topics and funding opportunities at the federal level. They've helped the city secure funding, given us advance notice and assistance with federal grants, and have facilitated meetings and information sessions with members of the administration and with Congress. Fiona McAnally is here if you have any further questions about this item. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount not to exceed $500,000 for the Lonsdale Neighborhood Revitalization Project.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, we're very excited about this park that's being built and also wanted to commend the city for the public process that was engaged throughout the time period. And a lot of the suggestions of the neighborhood was brought to bear. And I think this is really going to be a good project, and we look forward to a ribbon cutting, hopefully, in 2025.
I hope so, too. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in an amount not to exceed $500,000 for park infrastructure improvements at Volunteer Landing.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Singh?
Thank you. Should I ask Cheryl Ely?
Cheryl Ely is here, our Director of Parks and Rec. Ms. Ely, if you could step forward to answer some questions. Oh, I'm sorry, we have someone signed up to speak on this. I apologize. We'll go back to, we'll do the public speaker and then come back to you. Constance Everi, are you present? Okay. You have, I've signed up to speak in opposition to this item. If you could start by stating your name and address for the record, you'll have up to five minutes to speak. And you do need to turn the microphone on.
Yeah, okay. My name is Constance Everi, Knox, Tennessee, 37914. The thing is about this is that, you know, I love Ms. Detra a lot. She knows that, and we have mutual great respect. The concern here is, though, is that when we look at our budget, City Park and Rec is the smallest proportion of this budget. We spend minimum here. My concern is that when we do put money into the City Park and Rec budget, it's normally going to infrastructure. But we need to continue to invest in our children. Clearly, we need to invest in our children. And so, you know, I feel like Volunteer Landing is one of the, what is it, South Knox Riverfront areas? There's a lot of investment going on over there. But I participate in our City Rec League sports, and our children need uniforms. We need more accessibility to practice areas, like the basketball courts, for example. We don't have enough to actually spread around to have more than two practices a week, and we're playing games on Saturday. But the goal of the program is to develop the kids' sports in the fundamental game so that they can pursue into the school and next level of their sport level of their choice. But the resources are limited. We lack referees. We don't have enough referees. And one of the complaints of the refereeing also is the pay. And the coaches and other parts of this program is already volunteered. So there has been, games been canceled So there has been, games been canceled because we don't have money to pay our refs. And y'all have competitors here. I can't think of it, it's called WBBL, I think is the program. They pay their referees $20. So they're refereeing their games, but the city games are not being reffed. We also talk about sports equipment, basketballs. Most of the programs and organizations like MCA and CCYSP pay out of pocket for those minimum resources. But the city should provide that, in my opinion. And so it's like, when are y'all going to make serious investments towards the children to show the children you really care about them? Because violence interruption cannot just fall on a few hands of our community. Park and Rec is one of a historical programming of, in violence interruption. You've seen it in Philadelphia, you see it in areas of New York, you see it in areas of California. It's big in Texas, especially around their football programming. This is really how you make direct impact as the elected official and the body to show the children the investment is about them. Yes, they need parks that are safe. Yes, they should have equipment that they should be able to enjoy no matter what the disability or capability of the child is. But at the same time, it's beyond the parks. It's beyond the equipment. It is the children who actively use these type of things and the programming that you all sponsor and fund as well. So can we please stop prioritizing infrastructure and start prioritizing our children instead? And start looking at how we can support the programs and the clubs that build up what we know as the City Rec Leagues in football, baseball, basketball. There are multiple, I think there is even a soccer league now starting up behind this, too, because investment has been made in soccer. Great, there are a lot of kids who want to play soccer. But are we making sure those kids got cleats? Are we making sure those kids have the proper safety equipment? Are we making sure the kids have uniforms? Because I know there's kids in the league that have jerseys, and then there's leagues that's putting tape on their shirts. And that should not be how that is, at all. Every kid should feel like they're part of the program, and they should be equally represented in how their presentation looks in the program as well. So I'm going to challenge you all to stop prioritizing infrastructure in City Park and Rec. I'm also going to challenge the mayor and her council to increase the budget in City Park and Rec. And more importantly, remember who participates in these programs and the messaging you're sending by the lack of resources we currently have versus the proper resource they should have to continue to show that they are the future of athletic sports in this city, too. I yield my time.
Council, that concludes the people who signed up to speak on this item. Councilmember Singh?
Thank you. Ms. Ely?
I guess I'm on, thanks. Cheryl Ely, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Hi. So my question is, for this grant that we applied for, was there a reason that we applied for Volunteer Landing versus, was there a reason that the grant was more pointed towards that? Or could we have asked for funds for different parks or children's programs in Knoxville?
I think we kind of looked at all the things that we had on the table that was going forward at this point in time. Lonsdale was one of our major ones, and Volunteer Landing came up because a lot of it is due to the fountains. And that's another, another infrastructure thing for kids in that area. So putting that as a priority as another water space for kids along the river was one of the priorities that we looked at.
Okay, it's not just the, the, uh...
There's some other infrastructure things that are there, but yes, ma'am. But it was really part of that was looking at, how do we make that space better? Because it is one of our upfront places that we have. And so we were really working on trying to address those issues.
I guess what my issue is that it is, it serves a population that doesn't seem to need it as much as other populations do, and that's my only concern.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Singh, I would just say, you know, on this agenda you just approved with the Lonsdale, a similar investment, which is a neighborhood with more low-income families. Volunteer Landing serves the whole city, and federal grants also tend to be capital and infrastructure-based in nature, not programmatic. Just, you know, it's a splash pads. It's a fountain that is really popular when it's working. I think it's been some time since it's been operational. And one thing I've learned is that operating a fountain is basically as complicated as doing a whole pool, except you don't need lifeguards. But otherwise, just the water part and cleaning it, it's expensive. And that's, that's why we're thankful to have this federal grant to help pay for the repairs. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if this grant, uh, would be able to be used for anything outside of infrastructure?
No, ma'am, it is for our infrastructure. So basically, what we're asking for this grant to do is to really pay for the soft cost for it. So basically, we're looking at the planning and design fee that we're asking them to cover in that. So the $500,000 would go for, towards that part of it.
Are we looking for funding to increase our, the amount we're able to allocate towards supporting youth programs?
We're always looking for grants and all opportunities that we can. If there's a grant that's out there, we're always looking to see if we can get there. Be honest with you, part of the issue that we're having is our master plan is outdated. And so we're now in the process of doing that, because there's monies that we've had to leave on the table because our plan is 15 years old. And so we are in the process of doing that, and I think we'll start kicking off sometime this month that we can start that master plan and move forward with truly looking at how we run Parks and Recreation and our infrastructure and our programming. So that's where we are at this point.
And you said that you expect that plan to be complete when?
We hope to have it complete by the end of this year. So the kickoff will start off, we'll start doing some public engagement by probably March. So our consultants will be in town sometime this month, and we'll start meeting with a couple of small groups going forward. So that'll start the process.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, I think some of my questions just got asked, but so, Ms. Ely, we voted on the contract for the master plan process shortly before Christmas. My brain's a little foggy with the break there on when we did that. But, so the master planning process with the public engagement, we'll be looking at everything. It'll be looking at the actual parks themselves, the infrastructure, the programming. Any other components or elements that we haven't hit upon?
It's really system-wide. We're looking at connectivity, whether it connects to, from here to the county.
Okay.
We're looking at connectivity throughout the city because of our greenways and trails. We're looking at our programming. Basically, we, we have rec programs. Are they working? Do they make sense? What do we need to have in that? We're also looking at our buildings. So we're looking at everything that falls under Parks and Recreation, including our parks and all of the infrastructure that goes with it.
And staffing?
And staffing.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'm looking forward to the process.
Thank you.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. And Ms. Ely, I'm glad again to hear that we will be looking at the master plan with public input because we do have several rec centers that are very dated, that have been in existence for a very long time. I do want to back us up 15, maybe 20 years. If memory serves me correctly, at that particular time, I do believe that we were investing more in those rec league programs. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
That I can't say because it was 15, 20 years ago, and it's, it was before me.
Did that predate you?
It predated me.
Okay, but I do think that that may be under Sam Anderson when he was over there. Yeah, that there was a time with, that was, that was huge. And we did see a lot of engagement from children in our community, more so than we're seeing now. And that very well could, could have been a part of it. And so I do fully look forward to that, and just if you'll just keep us posted so we can make sure that the, all communities where rec centers are located or in close proximity, where folks can come out and give that input, because I do think that it's very important going forward that we are affording kids, and I do agree with the comments that were made earlier, that all kids do deserve to be able to have those uniforms and to take pride in participating in city rec programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. As a basketball coach, and I pestered you over the holidays, I want to take a moment to, a rare agreement with Ms. Evry about the need for basketball support after hours. And we'll change it up later, I'm sure. So after, you know, rec centers need to be open after school so kids can play. So I just want to put a plug in for the staffing side that we need in order for just the gyms, particularly in the winter, to be open. We need humans to be there, we need people to make it safe. And so just a plug for that ahead of the community input process. And one more sidebar for Mr. Bill Lyons is here. I missed you earlier, sorry. Part of the task force, there are four council members, but also members of the public, including Mr. Lyons, is here tonight. So I wanted to recognize you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, thanks for this discussion, and I do think that the timing is right to reexamine all this while we have this strategic plan process underway. So I'm looking forward to the discussion and hopefully always continue to improve and enhance our programs and our infrastructure. We can do both. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Axon Enterprise Incorporated to provide the Knoxville Police Department with continuing in-car and body camera video capture and cloud-based management services, as well as new services, including a records management system and real-time information center software system, at a cost not to exceed $27,582,318.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, we have some community members who've signed up to speak. We'll start with those who signed up to speak in favor, and then move to those who've signed up to speak in opposition. Councilmember Parker?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we suspend our rules to allow for all speakers who've signed up this evening on this topic.
Okay. Councilmembers, a motion has been made to suspend the rules to allow for all the people who have signed up to speak. It's been made and seconded. Vice Mayor, oh, Councilmember Singh? And then the Vice Mayor?
I second that, but I'd like to amend it to, I want everyone to be able to speak because this is a lot of money, but maybe three minutes instead of five minutes.
Councilmember Parker, you know, it's your motion.
Can you let us know how many speakers have signed up?
There are six people signed up to speak in opposition and three in favor.
Then it's fine.
Yeah, that's, we can handle that.
Take back that motion.
Okay, the motion is to suspend the rules to allow for all those people who signed up. Vice Mayor Smith?
I won't be supporting it only because I think it needs to be equal for both sides, and that's not equal, and I've been consistent on that for years, and I'll remain consistent on that. And I've made a lot of people unhappy doing it. But I think it's important that both sides of every matter have equal time, and that's important.
Okay. Councilmember Parker, further discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion, we're voting on the motion to suspend the rules. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? I think it failed, or maybe we need, I mean, yeah. Excuse me, please don't speak from the audience, they're trying to conduct the city business. We'll do roll call.
Councilwoman Singh? Council, Vice Mayor Smith? Councilwoman Thomas? Councilwoman Fugit? Councilwoman Helsley? Councilwoman McKenzie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker? Councilwoman Ryder? Councilman Roberto?
No.
Mayor, the vote is four in favor, five opposed.
Okay, the motion to suspend the rules was, did not pass.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we'll go on and move forward with public forum as under your normal council rules. We'll start with Ms. Evry. You have, if you could, you've signed up to speak in favor of this item. If you would come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, turn on the microphone, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Yeah, Constance Evry, 37914 Knoxville. Hey, Tommy, a broken clock is bright twice a day. You know that, right? Okay, cool. So, yeah, you know, isn't it ironic? I can agree to this initiative. If everything that Paul Noel wants to do applies to his department, so every surveillance camera you put up in our neighborhood needs to go in every neighborhood of your police officers. Every patrol beat that you have set up in our neighborhood, you need to have the same patrol beats in your own neighborhoods. Every location of where you are saving the data, resources, or whatever you're going to do with this information, you need to apply it to your police department as well. That's where I can agree to this at. More importantly, the reality that we're dealing with here is that this is part of that real-time crime center. I know exactly what this is, and you've been building up to this moment. The kicker is that, my question is about access quality of the product. You know, when Anthony Johnson Jr. got killed, there were four cameras that access applied to those four officers in that bathroom incident. The kicker is that according to the DA, Charm Allen, only three of those cameras were, I mean, three of those cameras were inoperable, and one camera worked. So let me get this straight. $27 million, and you have cameras that don't work. What is the policy of checking the equipment? Because it should be considered uniform-based, right? So when I come in for my shift, is there some type of checklist I go through to confirm that my equipment is operational and functional? Because if that's the case, then we have to question, was the cameras actually operable or not? Access, do you have other options besides the ones that we currently have that are in better improved base of operational functionality in the line of field? That's what we need to start talking about. You all come in here and ask for this money, but then there's so many problems in the department, and departments with an S. Because real-time crime center is not just going to stay the KPD. Knox County Sheriff's going to use that equipment. TBI is going to use that equipment. Tennessee Highway Patrol is going to use that equipment. And yet, we have incidents where the company's equipment is inoperable. So that's a problem. And you want us to give this company $27 million more? Then you got the tasers with the real-time face recognition. I'm going to have to continue to ask that question. Is it operable? Is it functional? Or is it at night when shadows are occurring? And if I'm a person of pigmentation, it just, as the artificial intelligence that we have learned just makes it up and creates the narrative for you. And can just say, this is the idea of a person because the shadow in this light made it look like a black person, but a shadow in this light made it like a white man. Well, sheesh, we got some serious problems with this equipment, don't we? And more importantly, what have you done to earn the equipment? When you really look at the history of this department? When you really look at the history of the police departments of Knoxville, Knox County? When you really look at the District Attorney Charm Allen, how she handles the situations where you all are the ones in the wrong? The question really comes down, have you even earned my money? Because this is my money, their money, y'all money. But the kicker is that, have you earned the money? And I think a lot of people just want to go say, no, hell no, matter of fact, no. No, you have not. A child has been killed, and that's what we're waiting on now, footage. And it's the same company. So I got another question for access. How long does it take for you all to process the tape? Because it seems like according to my DA that it may take nine to 96 hours to seven days. So, sheesh, if we had an incident where we had a serial killer going on, how quickly can we get the evidence out to make sure that we're making our communities vigilant and more importantly, identifying the serial killer so they can do their job? Because it looks like to me that if we're going to say that we want this money, but we're having these issues, is it safe to say that we're having a technology defect? Maybe it's the technology's fault why everything is so delayed when situations occur with the police. Maybe that's the answer. Maybe that's it. Maybe I'm just tripping. And then the recommendations that we have learned from Ms. Parker's analysis is that ACLU speaks against this because there's so many problems in the identification process and more importantly, criminalization and surveillance. Surveillance, sheesh, I've heard that word in my court case. Surveillance. Y'all got 100 text message thread. How many text messages y'all send out today about my page? How many did y'all send out today? Because I know y'all do it, we know it from court. Y'all do it. So tell me, is that part of the real crime time center? Is that part of the access $27 million spying on citizens of the community because they speak against the establishment? Is that what access also does? It's, I'm trying to figure it out. Like, make this make sense. Because Paul Noel comes from one of the most corrupted departments ever. But this is an analysis he brought from New Orleans. Y'all are actually funny in a lot of ways, honestly. So with that being said, I'm looking forward to Ms. Parker opening up the floor to farther evaluate the problematic issues. And more importantly, I hope you all use your brains and realize this ain't worth our money.
That concludes your five minutes.
I yield my time. Thank you, Indian candidate.
Next person is Michelle Hummel. Ms. Hummel, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll have up to five minutes.
Good evening, Michelle Hummel, 17 Market Square, Knoxville, 37902. Want to thank you for the opportunity to address this contract and speak in favor of it. I'm the Director of Downtown Knoxville Alliance, and while our board hasn't reviewed the contract, many of the initiatives align with the safety and security that we have as our priorities. I had the opportunity to talk with Captain Schaefer about the resolution yesterday and gained a better understanding of the opportunities this agreement provides our community. I know it's time to renew our body cameras, car cameras, et cetera. In addition, it provides the opportunity to update the record, pardon me, the reporting management system to a newer present-day system. But from the DKA standpoint, safety and security has been one of our top goals. We've been working with KPD to enhance the security in downtown. We've been looking to purchase new cameras for public safety or utilize current cameras that are in place. I understand as part of this software, camera owners can voluntarily opt-in to help with crime prevention, quicker apprehension of offenders, show evidence after the fact, provide current status during emergencies, and also help during big events. DKA fills and studies have shown that cameras in public places reduce crime, enhances public safety, but also I think it's more effective for KPD with their time as well. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Linda Connor. Ms. Connor, if you could come to the podium. Is Linda Connor present?
Mayor, Ms. Connor texts me earlier and said that she's not going to be able to be here tonight.
Okay.
She's not feeling well, thank you.
Okay, thanks for letting me know. We'll move to the people who signed up to speak in opposition. First is Rick Roach. Mr. Roach, are you present? Okay. You can come to the podium, start by stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Really is not a way to start off the year, but Rick Roach, Knoxville. Okay. There's data, and then there's data. Okay? And then we talk about who controls that data. There's equipment that is used supposedly to bring about an air of fairness and justice into the policing process, body cams primarily. I remember when Ms. Evry and I attended a, and Mayor, you were there in a campaign mode at a park meeting, and we were talking about body cams. And there was a reluctance in the police department to institute body cams. Okay? Well, we said, if you're going to do this, if you're going to do this, if you're going to do this, and you're going to have a testing period and all this good stuff, a trial period, these are some of the conditions that we would like to see. Oh, by the way, when you put this in place, you may want to have a strong legal, civilian legal presence to review the information immediately after recording, and you say it's evidence now. We asked for that. We asked them to consider that. Chief Thomas, okay, well, we'll think about it. No, you really need to do this. Okay? And what do we have? We have a situation right now. KPD SWAT team, you didn't have your cameras on until somebody got killed. You didn't start putting your cameras on until somebody got killed. Okay? So, where is the fairness coming from the police department that encourages us to support, to support all this technology? I mean, right now, I live kind of now, because I've changed residence, a little bit north, but still east. And I'm telling you, it's right down the way from the police department. And I'm just telling you right now, it's surveillance? We can't get straight answers about what type of drones are being used? When are they being used? Why are they being used? That's basic information that the public should have. If you're going to surveil us, tell us why the hell you're surveilling us. Okay? And tell us about the technology that you're using. That would be nice. Okay? And if you guys still want to do it, fine, give them the money, fine, go ahead, we'll vote you out. Okay? That's the way that rolls. But you're not being upfront about all of this. Really, you're not. And that's the problem. Okay? I've historically come from a community that has been more than surveilled, more than overpoliced. And Gwen, you know it. You know it, 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 okay? Whether we all want to admit it or not. Okay? So, let's kind of bring this back down to a level of understanding of, and here's the timing thing about this. All of a sudden, the timing to get this twenty-seven million dollars, I think it came from you, Chief Noel, correct me if I'm wrong. You said that there was an urgency because you, part of this is going to come from federal grant paying for some of this, and that it has to be done by June, at the end of the year, fiscal year? Okay? Really? Okay. How about let's be prudent? How about let's be on the mark as to the real need and wait? And make sure we have all the pertinent information. Because right now, some of that information would actually say, guess what? We're overpolicing, we're over surveilling, we have particular communities, and we have faulty equipment. The technology is faulty. Okay? It has its problems. And when I read some of that stuff, the Exxon, whatever the heck the name of the company is, wants, what they want to do with this equipment, with this technology, have you all read it? Have you read it? If this is what you want for your communities, okay, that you represent, this is why I say you all haven't read this stuff. You need to. Delay this vote, table it, do whatever you need to do, and do the right thing once you get all the information on the table. Thank you.
Next person signed up to speak is Moira Connolly. Ms. Connolly? You can start by saying your name and address for the record. You'll have up to five minutes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Moira Connolly, and I live at fifty-seven twenty-six South Briscoe Circle here in Knoxville. I'm speaking as a community member and specifically as a representative of an advocacy organization in Knoxville called Healing East Tennessee Alternative Response Team. I'm excited to be one of the task force members that is beginning work this Friday to sort of talk about alternative response in Knoxville. And my comments are really in the spirit of that task force, what has to do with appropriate responses to community situations. And I think what we have in this resolution is a series of extreme measures that do not indicate appropriate responses to community situations that we've seen. For example, we've been told, I'm sure correctly, that crime in Knoxville is down. That seems to have occurred without any of the extreme measures represented by this resolution or in this contract. Likewise, as Mr. Roach says, there are a lot of questions. Again, responding appropriately to a community situation requires having all the information that we need, all the data that we need, all the public input that we need, all the time that we need in order to make an appropriate response. There are also some other things that we really should consider as we look at this contract. And I have looked at the entire thing, and I do know that it starts on page five hundred of the agenda packet that was sent out for this meeting and that it runs to hundreds of pages. I've read the whole thing. I've spent five to ten hours on this project over the past weekend. So, I would really urge you to vote against the request of the Knoxville Police Department for a twenty-seven million dollars. That's a lot of zeros, as Councilmember Parker has pointed out in other spaces. My overriding concern is this. Our democracy operates on the principle of innocence. Community members are considered innocent until proven guilty. However, the scooping up indiscriminately of personal information assumes the opposite. Police should only have the ability to scoop up personal digital information when they have a specific documented reason to seek information on community members. Second, the city has much better things to do with this money, such as providing staffing or grants for the warming centers that we all know are in dire need at the moment. Third, if council wants to consider these funds, the police department should have to include it in their annual budget request rather than rather bundling this up in a decades-long request. This item, this budget item, if you look at it in the contract, goes out ten years. It goes out a decade. My concern is this. My concern is that in bundling this all together, it's going to prevent transparency on the part of city council and community members that would be allowed if it had to come back up annually as an individual light item in the KPD budget, so that they're just able to sort of get a decades' worth of financing out there without oversight that would be appropriate in otherwise annual review. Fourth, in this political climate, city council has a responsibility to realize that other entities outside the city may take legal action regardless of what the city or the police department want to do to requisition any digital information gathered by the city. By approving this request, city council members may find themselves complicit in gathering information on innocent unsuspecting community members for uses well beyond what this contract hoped that information would be used for. Fifth, the police department already has many new tools at its disposal, and we've already had a reduction in crime. We've already paid hundreds of thousands of dollars for new vehicles. We just bought horses? And so, we already have spent a lot of money in providing new tools for the department, and this resolution represents overreach. Additionally, one of our companion cities in the state of Tennessee, Nashville, recently rejected a similar contract for reasons similar to the ones that I list. If a city the size of Nashville does not need these extreme measures, we do not either. Thank you.
Okay, the third and final speaker in opposition to this item is Jack Fox. Jack Fox, are you present?
Yes.
Okay, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll have up to five minutes to address council.
This is, okay, it's on. My name is Jax Fox. I live in District Three in the Norwood neighborhood. As a citizen, there are many things with which to be concerned on this agenda item. The price tag of twenty-seven million, the general privacy issues addressed by other speakers, the lack of data on the real-time information center and possible targeted enforcement in certain neighborhoods or communities, and the short turnaround to make a decision on this quote, which was issued on December twenty-third, right before the holiday break, giving the city only ten business days with this information. However, I'm here to speak on what I have personal experience with. Automatic speech, speech recognition, and text generative AI, forms of AI to be used within the software package in this agreement with Axon. Called Draft One, this software would be, would use body cam footage and audio to generate police reports of encounters. Axon's website assures, quote, "These narratives cannot be submitted without officer review, editing, and approval, and the functionality is restricted to minor incident types and charge levels." The company, however, also states that the agency has control over what incident types and charge levels are included, as well as stating that reports are not included, that reports are not generally submitted as direct evidence to courts, but it's true that every jurisdiction needs to define their own policies when it comes to the use of any public safety technology. Considering how far behind local, state, and federal law is on dealing, on dealing with technology, this hands-off approach on how their software might be used raises many concerns for the possible legal scenarios. My personal experience with this type of software is in my graduate school research as a tool. I use built-in automatic speech recognition on Zoom to create the base of a transcript from ten-hour or longer recorded focus groups. However, it was regularly a mess. Statements were mislabeled as the wrong user, phrases and whole sentences were omitted, and words were regularly changed to something else either due to someone's accent or audio quality. It took me hours to correct and verify each transcript, and that was with everyone sitting in their offices and attempting to make themselves clearly heard and understood. While this works for the information sciences research I was helping to conduct, y'all can see how this might be a problem to rely on for in-the-field law enforcement interactions where folks may not be speaking clear English into a microphone and actions can easily become chaotic. This is on top of the general ethical and environmental issues with generative AI, of which there are numerous research articles and even longer works. Draft One was developed using AI models from OpenAI, which is the company that created ChatGPT and is constantly in the news for internal struggles, bold and unfounded statements about the future of AI, and alarming warnings from others in the field on the company's use of their technology. These AI models also require intensive water usage for their data centers housing the servers that contain these programs. The cloud has to be physically somewhere and use resources, water, energy, and rare earth metals, even if we can't see it. I'm here asking this council to take their time to consider the impact and price tag of this contract and vote no on this resolution. Right now, the temperature is around twenty-nine degrees, and four churches have been housing our homeless citizens and neighbors under their roofs. These emergency warming centers are entirely run on volunteer labor and supplies from the churches and community. In fact, myself and a coworker, hourly retail workers, have gone in together to purchase and prepare a meal for one of the centers this week to feed seventy people because these centers are having to rely on community support to feed those seeking shelter. There are currently around two-hundred-and-eighty beds in these warming shelters in addition to Carm's usual three-hundred, which falls short of the estimates of Knoxvilleians experiencing homelessness, somewhere around fifteen-hundred. If the city isn't able to provide life-saving emergency housing for its citizens from the winter weather, the city needs to rethink spending twenty-seven million dollars on a questionable contract for law enforcement technology and realign its priorities with the needs of its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, that concludes public speaking on this item. I just wanted to provide a little bit of context. This item we are bringing to you is all about enhancing the safety of the people of our city. Our IT consultant, Averro, advised us during the procurement process that bundling would save the city millions of dollars and improve the integration of all the systems. This is nothing earth-shattering about this. Excuse me, you're not recognized? There's no more public speaking?
I signed up to speak, so I would like to know what I'm not.
No, council did not suspend its rules. There's a three in favor and three in opposition. You may not address council. No. This contract, excuse me, you're interrupting the business of council. Please do not disrupt the meeting of council. Councilmembers, this, this contract, as you all have read on the AIS and on memos that Chief Noel has sent and various conversations you've had with Chief Noel, Assistant Chief Powell, our CFO, Mr. Evans, I think you have had a lot of information, and we're looking forward to more discussion this evening. But the short and, long and short of it is this is going to modernize and update many of the systems that we already have in place, including our record management system. Excuse me. Do not, okay, that's out of order. If I hear any more profanity coming from the audience, you'll be asked to leave. You can leave right now if you prefer. Thank you. This updates our records management system, which hasn't been updated since 2010. We've been trying to do this for several years. And again, as I mentioned before, as we were moving forward with the records management system, our tech advisors, Averro Consultants, advised us that it would not only save money but improve integration and performance and effectiveness, getting, making sure our systems speak to each other and are user-friendly for our officers and so forth to bundle this. So, this is going to update our records management system, which hasn't been updated since 2010, renew the contracts for body worn cameras, which this council was the first ever in the city of Knoxville history to adopt, which has improved accountability and transparency incredibly. It also updates our contracts for in-car cameras, for tasers, and also enables us to operationalize the real-time information center, which again is something this council has discussed and been aware of and invested in since at least 2021. I know that I took a trip to visit the Real-Time Information Center in Chattanooga back before Chief Noel was even our police chief, so this is something that I have been aware of and working towards. This council supported the construction of the Real-Time Information Center, the walls and wires, and this would add the software elements to operationalizing it. Ultimately, the contract ensures that our technologies keep up with modern-day policing, improving transparency and accountability, and allowing us to respond more quickly to emergencies and also to solve crimes faster. We've seen how it works well in other places, and I think the people of Knoxville deserve similar levels of public safety. Chief Noel and the rest of the team are here to answer any of your questions. Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah, so I'm going to start with Mr. Evans. Mr. Evans, there's a lot of focus on the sum total of the length of the full contract, so could we break that down for people who didn't see that in the packet and compare that to other contracts and systems that are typically approved by council? This particularly before us to approve is a five-year contract, and what the numbers are for that, and then what the extension is, that's an option.
Yes, ma'am. Boyce Evans, Chief Financial Officer for the city. First off, the total cost of the contract, as you know, is right around twenty-seven-point-six million. That's over eleven and a half years. And what you've got here in front of you is you're voting on a proposed five-year base term, and then.
What's the five-year? And what's the per-year?
In other words, the five-year, and then, I'm going to give you that.
Okay, thank you.
Then an option to renew for another six and a half years. So, let's see. The local dollars.
I think my ballpark number was it's about.
The, the, the.
It's two-something per year.
Yeah, it, it is. It's, I think it's around two-point-three or so million a year. And, but then you've got the grants in there, which is about another two-point-three million. And it, and when you push it all out, that's when you get that twenty-seven-point-six million. So, that's.
Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah. So, Mr. Evans, is this pretty typical, like, we have, so this contract is for an entire umbrella of services, cloud storage for body cams, dash cams, also record-keeping management system, so it's a entire suite of services for KPD to operate, issue tickets, take reports, and many other things in their wheelhouse. The building department also has a multi-year contract for a database system, a seller, I think. So, that's correct, Mr. Boyce. Like, it's very standard with purchasing that we do multi-year contracts.
When you, when you get these like items like this and you can bundle them, yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay. And I've specifically been through the purchasing department process for, and been on the committee for that, for audit contract, for our external auditor. I think we've done about six years with that, with options to renew for four-plus years. So, we've done over ten years with that, is my recollection. Is that standard as well, Mr. Evans?
Yes, a lot of times, like I say, it's five-year with another five-year option.
Okay.
Or you could have five years with a three-year option and two each one year. I mean, but a lot of times.
Just depends on the company and what they offer.
And it depends on what they're going to. And as far as what you were talking about earlier, yeah, that breaks down, that twenty-seven million comes to about two-point-three-nine million per year. That's, that's what that is.
Okay, and that is out of the regular police budget?
Affirmative.
Their annual operating budget to be able to manage.
And that will have to be approved in a subsequent year.
Sure.
In other words, right now, we're coming to you, okay, you don't budget for grant dollars, okay? Because you don't know if you're going to get them or not. We have to come to council and ask for you to approve us applying for the grant dollars. Once you approve that, and then we get the grant dollars, then, in other words, it doesn't have to be appropriated in the budget. We're going to spend the grant dollars first. We're going to spend the grant dollars first, because as somebody said a little while ago, we need to have those spent, I think it's in June of this coming year. So we're going to focus on those first. Each subsequent FY after that, it has to be approved as part of their operating budget for all of this. It's it's part of their target.
Okay, but it's part of their regular budget. This is not above and beyond, this is not extramoney, this is operating procedural money to be able to function.
In fact, 95% of what we are buying in products and services are things that we already pay for, the body cameras, the in-car cameras, the an outdated, albeit, records management system and all that type thing. We're already paying for that. The only thing that is new is the Real Time Information Center, which when you look at costs, it goes to about.
Please do not interrupt from the audience or you'll be asked to leave.
Goes to about 5% of the total cost.
Please do not interrupt from the audience, or you'll be asked to leave. Person in the front row with the hat or second row, please do not interrupt from the audience. Okay? Councilmember Singh, councilmember Singh, you're out of order, you are out of order. Please stop talking or you'll be asked to leave. Okay, stop talking or you'll be asked to leave.
I think our rules are that they leave when.
Okay. If you are, the person that stopped talking, we'll proceed with council's discussion. Let's keep doing the city's business. Councilmember Singh?
Um, let me see. So I'd like to amend the motion into two pieces, just for my clarity's sake and for our discussion moving forward, but I'll need Mr. Evans' help because to divide the question, the sum, the 27 million, is for both pieces. So I'll try to be clear, saying a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement to provide the Knoxville Police Department with in-car body camera, video capture, as well as new services, records management system, period, and then the Real Time Information System is the second resolution. Does that make sense?
I, can you, you're making a motion, can you just say, I'm making a motion to, what exactly?
I'm making a motion to divide the question.
Okay. Councilmember Singh's making a motion to divide the question per what she said? And Councilmember Parker, you're seconding that motion? Okay, councilmembers, there's been a motion to divide the question. Any questions or discussion?
I do have some discussion.
Councilmember Parker?
And this goes back to the funding conversation, because I've also had questions for finance about the 27 million, and there are some numbers that I think are important. In our packet, the proposed contract with Axon says that this new contract would replace several contracts that are currently in place. And so I wanted to know what were the cost of the current contracts for the body and dash cams, the old records management system tasers? And the response I got was, for all of the current services, it's 7,216,000 for a five-year term. If that were increased to a similar 11 and a half-year term, as it's being presented before us, it'll be 16,000,000.5 rather than the 27.8 or whatever it is before us. So just from, well, first of all, I'm not seeing the cost savings from bundling because we are contracting with a company that is notorious for increasing their cost. So already, we've seen the cost, and not all of those were Axon services, like the records management system, but our previous records management system cost less than a million, whereas this is an ongoing, it's hard to break out the cost, but an ongoing annual cost of at least 100,000 or more. For just the Real Time Information Center, the number that was shared with me was an additional 108,000 per year for the software, and I assume that also includes the Real Time Information Center cameras are included in that quote that you shared with me of So we're looking at increasing our costs from 16 million to 27 million per year. That worth going towards KPD for their growing surveillance program, and that's something we should keep in mind when considering dividing the question. Would I support, I support that?
Councilmembers, it's been brought to my attention that, well, you know, first of all, this contract's been negotiated as one comprehensive contract, and if council needs to vote on it up or down in that manner, because otherwise it would have to be renegotiated. Also, now that we're in 2025, the prices will go up further. So I think that the, it's not a feasible motion. I'm also told by Mr. Johnson that, according to our rules, dividing a question is not debatable. So I didn't realize that when we heard those comments, so I apologize, but I think that we should take a vote on whether or not council wants to divide the question. All those in favor of dividing the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion to divide the question fails. Back to the original motion, which is to approve item 11L. Any further councilmember questions? Tom, Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. There's been a lot of misinformation, and I want to make sure that everybody gets some clarity around some of the questions that we've all probably asked, and there's been some very good questions from the public that that I think are important. Why is it important that this be extended over 11 years as opposed as opposed to the five years?
Great question. Councilmember Ryder, it actually kind of, Chief Willis, could you turn that mic off? I think it's creating an echo. It kind of aligns with what you were asking as well. The implementation for an RMS, this is not something you want to do every day. The implementation for RMS is going to take about 18 months. Last time we changed RMS's was in 2010, right? Same thing with implementing implementing body worn cameras, in-car cameras, a lot of equipment, a lot of hardware, software that needs to be changed out. So negotiating this over an 11 and a half-year period is going to allow us some sustainability. We won't have to keep doing this every couple of years. It also makes it, helps us out with training as well. If we bring in, every time we bring a new system in, there's a lot of training that we need to do with all of our employees, the civilian and police officer personnel. And it just, it makes a lot of sense to do this for a long period of time. It also locks in the price for an 11 and a half-year period as well.
Okay. 95% of this is either an extension of what technology we already have and use, or an upgrade to that existing technology. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So 95% of this big number is already in place in some other form now?
Yes.
Okay. So this essentially upgrades or extends the existing infrastructure that we have and technology in place, and adds this 5% around the new software associated with the Real Time Crime Center. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And all of the services that KPD contracts with Axon or anybody else that's over $25,000 has to come before council, before you all can use that service. Is that right?
I defer to.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm just clearing up, there's a lot of questions I've had for the community.
No, that is correct.
These are all worthy questions. I'm, I'm.
Like, if we were to amend the contract later on for something like that, we'd have to come back.
Right, that's right. You can't build upon the contract on your own without council knowing about it.
That's correct.
All right, thank you for that. So the 5%, I think, is what the, I want to focus on, because the body worn cameras have been very useful in public transparency, safety. So I think I want to focus on this new item, this 5%. So this is for the, is it called FUSESS software, yeah?
Correct.
Okay. And in order to access that, that footage, whoever owns the camera or owns the footage has to give voluntary access to KPD, is that correct?
That's one piece of FUSESS, correct.
Okay, thank you. And on that note, can you give some examples of what happens today when there's been a crime or suspicion of a crime, which I think you still have to have evidence for and even to request this in the future? Please clarify that in a minute. But what happens today versus what happens after this, if it's approved, in terms of collecting evidence and the speed of doing that?
Sure, so right now, for for video evidence, if we're investigating a crime, if there is a, say, a burglary at location X, we have to go right now, our detectives and cadets will go around and physically look for cameras. And if we see a camera on an exterior building, we will go knock on the door and ask that person, that business owner, if we could take a look at that camera to see if there is pertinent evidence of that crime for us to use. If there is pertinent evidence, then that person, that business owner, has to figure out how to download it, get it to us, where we could use it in our investigation. That takes a lot of time. If we had FUSESS, and if that person, one, the first level would be doing the camera registry, they would register their camera to let us know that they have a camera, we would already know that they have a camera there, so we would know where to go, we would know who to contact. If they allowed us the varying stages of access to access their camera for a call for service for an investigative purpose, we would be able to, in real time, pretty quickly, go back and take a look at that and to see if there was pertinent video evidence that would assist us in our investigation. If there would not be pertinent video evidence, we move on to the next one. If there is, we would download that, and we would add that to our case file as a part of our investigation.
So in almost, in all cases or most cases, it's reactive after there is suspicion of a crime? Is that correct?
That would be correct.
So the the term "real time" in this in this context is a little misleading in the sense that you're not logging in in real time in cameras all over the city and watching people move about their business.
That that would be almost impossible to do. A small part of this would be, the real-time piece, would be if a call for service comes out. Say, we had cameras around Market Square, and there was a shooting, the operator would be able to take a look at those cameras in real time and assist our responding officers as they were responding to the scene. Most of this is going to be after the fact, going back and assisting in investigations.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
I have some more questions.
We'll come back to you. We've got a couple of your colleagues signed up to ask questions as well. Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to direct this to Chief Noel. Chief Noel, you know, we've had some conversation around this technology and ensuring that it's not going to be used to be that big brother that's just going to be surveilling people and watching them when there is not a crime that's been committed or in progress. Can you talk a little bit about how you're going to ensure that that does not happen?
So any camera footage we have, whether it's from city cameras, which we'll eventually have, or if private businesses allow us to access their public-facing cameras, every time we go into that system, there is a detailed audit trail. We will know who accessed that video feed, for how long, for what they did, and that there is no way around that. And all of our existing policies on on data collection, our code of conduct, all would be in place. Anyone that would violate that policy would be subject to disciplinary action. And it's actually much more transparent with this system than what we have now. And I, you know, I'll give you an example. Last, I guess, maybe two Sunday nights ago, there was that case where that two-year-old was missing. And we all went out, and we had officers, detectives fanned across the city trying to look for for that kid. I personally walked into a tobacco store in East Knoxville and asked to see someone's video. Looked at the video, the car we were looking for was not on that camera. There's no record of me going in and looking at that video feed. And all over the place, when we go in and we ask to look at video, there's no record of that. Every time, if we, if Axon FUSESS, if we have that and there's a video feed, every single time we go in there, there is a detailed audit trail. All of the existing KPD policies will be in place, will have sufficient supervision within the Real Time Information Center to ensure that that is only access for legitimate law enforcement purposes. And sitting on top of that, we have our Office of Professional Standards. Judge Guyton is actually in the office. We hired Judge Guyton to head up our Office of Professional Standards, and ultimately, it'll, the last, his job will be to make sure that everyone within the Real Time Information Center is following the rules and regulations about the point.
So if there is a call that there's been shots fired or someone has been potentially killed, would that automatically trigger whoever's manning this Real Time Crime Center to try to see if there's a camera in that in that area, and then go back and start looking at it from that particular point? Talk to me about how that would, how that would work.
Yes, ma'am. So I'll go back to the the safe scenario I was discussing with Councilmember Smith. Hypothetically, a shooting in Market Square. Soon as that, soon as that would happen, what FUSESS does, FUSESS is more than just video feed. FUSESS is connected to 911 system, so it alerts us to say, there is a call for service that has happened at this location. Then it tells the operator in front of that screen, you have three cameras within proximity of that of that shooting, and then that that operator is going to go and start looking at that in real time, or maybe three minutes back, five minutes back, to try to give that information to the officers responding. So just say that shooting happens, and, you know, we, you know, the complaint operator pulls up and sees someone in a red jacket running from the scene. They will relay that information to the officers. It may be related, may not be. Then they may be able to back up a little further and see that person with the red jacket actually use that weapon in that shooting, and they give that that information to our officers in real time, allow us to respond effectively to that scene.
Okay, and thank you for that. So some of the feedback, and one of the things that Ms. Connor was going to talk about, was how there's people in our community now that are afraid to come forward, even though we do have the, we have the hotline that people can call that's anonymous, that people are still afraid to do that in fear of retaliation if someone knows that they were potentially a witness. Could the cameras, could this, these surveillance cameras in the Real Time Crime Center circumvent their having to be a person who says, yes, identify that that person is the one who committed the murder? Would these Real Time Crime Center cameras be able to zoom in to, to identify that this is the person, or would it still require a witness to be able to come forward?
So, you know, there's, there's nothing better than an eyewitness coming in and saying, I saw X, Y, and Z. But we all know, and, you know, it's really hard to ask someone to come forward and be a witness. So if a camera would capture an incident, like we had when we had a murder happen within the day space, a day after the public service cameras being installed in the day space, there was a murder that happened there, that camera captured that murder, and we were able to very, very quickly, within the same day, apprehend that perpetrator, right? So I think, you know, I wouldn't say that it would eliminate the need for having a witness, but it certainly, you know, there's nothing, you know, it's certainly great to have that video evidence as well to show exactly what happened.
Thank you. Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, just a couple of questions. So thinking about the scenarios that you were talking about with regard to the kidnapping that you you mentioned, and officers going to the scene and viewing the video, when we're talking about this contract, are the videos that we're talking about today, are those videos that your officers would already be seeing?
Absolutely. So with this contract, we're not buying one camera. This just buys the software platform to manage the Real Time Information Center. So the video feeds, I think, that we're referring to would be if a private business owner, private, private business owner allows us to access their video feed. So that's cameras that would already be there. So, you know, we all know that there's cameras all throughout the city, at businesses, public-facing cameras, those cameras are already there. So right now, again, we go physically to those locations if we have a legitimate law enforcement investigative purpose, and we ask to see those cameras, and we download the data when necessary, those cameras are already there.
Okay, and and so you're going to be seeing the same videos you'd be seeing anyway, but there's also now a data trail, whereas there's not one today. And so I got that from one of the previous questions that you were you were asked. So there, there's more transparency when you are looking at videos.
Absolutely. So every time we would go into FUSESS, there's a detailed audit trail that shows what we did. And again, I think, like I responded to one of the council members earlier, you know, if we walk into a business and say, can we see your video, they voluntarily show it to us, and there's nothing on there that, that, you know, there's not going to be a record of that.
And the businesses we're talking about, that they had, they're voluntarily deciding to participate in this process, and they have a variety of levels of participation they can go into?
They absolutely do. The first level would be just simply registration. What the registration is, you know, would be. What the registration is, you know, would be the the business goes on and they register and they say, hey, this is my business. You know, the Roberto Law Firm, I have two public facing cameras. If you need to access video, this is how you will contact me. Phone number, email, whatever information you want to provide. So what what we would look on a FUSIS screen, just say there's a crime that we're investigating and the first thing we would do is go take a look at that registry and we say, oh, there's a camera right there. It's not linked up where we have the feed, but click on the icon and I have your information to call you and we could, you could help us in that investigation. What it'll also do, like the example of that lost kid we were looking for through the registry, we could click on a button that that will send out a notice to everyone that is registered to say, please check your camera for a Silva Honda Accord that may have passed your street during this time. And people can go check and give us this information. That's the first level. There's no video access into the Real Time Information Center at that level. The next level of access would be the business owner buying what's called a core, which is a small device that attaches to the server of the of the the camera system in the business, which would then allow varying degrees of access by the Real Time, the Knoxville Real Time Information Center. The business owner could decide to say, the core is connected, but you don't have access to it. If you need access, you give me a call, then I'll decide if I want to turn it on. The business owner could also say, I'm going to geofence it, saying, you could only go in there and look at that video if a call for service comes out. Right? So it's geofenced. If there's no call for service to come out, then we can't see the video. Or the business owner could say, you have, you know, anytime access for for that video feed.
And I mean, there's been a lot of talk about the the, you know, functionality of the the software, but what does this software actually do?
So the the so the FUSIS software is a platform, it's an interface where the the operator in the Real Time Information Center would work, right? So just like you would operate in Windows or in Microsoft Word or Microsoft 365, this is a platform. So what, so picture, you know, this is the Real Time Information Center. I would have, you know, several computer screens in front of me and one of them will show the calls for service going on in the city. And if there's a call for service that comes out with, that's in proximity to one of our cameras, it's going to alert that operator of that. And then the operator can choose to go in and then attempt to assist our our detectives, our officers who are responding in that call. Or you could have detective come in and say, we had a robbery reported last week and now I learned that the perpetrator may have passed in this location. And then can you go back and can you look, can you look the camera, the video feed for yesterday?
Hey, please do not interrupt a meeting. Mr. Chief Noel, please finish your answering the question, then we'll move on to the next councilmembers.
To see if there's video and then they would go look and then report back to the detective.
Thank you, Chief Noel. Councilmembers, members of the audience, please do not interrupt the business of council. It is our practice that if a council member is asked a question, I let the person who is asking the question continue. Excuse me, Ms. Everie, stop interrupting me and the business of the city. Stop interrupting. That's the practice and I think that's been fairly administered for everybody. Next person who's is Ms. Ms. Everie, you're out of order. You either be quiet or you'll be asked to leave. You are you're are you being quiet or are you going to leave?
I'm going to be quiet.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Ms. Helsley, you have the floor.
Most of my questions already got answered, but I got a couple here. So I know we already talked, but for the for the misinformation that's out there in the stratosphere, residences, residential cameras, can they be hooked into your system?
Technically, yes, but most residential systems will not are not compatible with FUSIS. So you would have to have a residential camera system that has a physical server sitting in your residence, right? Most common residential camera systems, Ring, Blink, Nest or cloud based systems that do not have a physical server, those servers are not compatible. I'm not, there's probably not many people out there that have camera systems that have more of a commercial style with a server sitting in there. If they did have that, they they could.
I don't have that, so just so you know. Number two, so the footage that you would look at from businesses unless, so I think the way I asked you was that would they be subject to a FOIA request?
So if we just, so the footage is, if we go in and look at it, right? So just go back to Roberto's Law Office and he gives us access to it and we go look for a car. So we go in, the operator goes and he looks and sees if the car is there and the car is not there. If we do not download that footage, it belongs to the council member Roberto, we do not possess it. It's sitting on his server. Right? So it was, so I'm not, I'm not going to speak for for the for the law department, but I would not do not believe that would be subject to a FOIA request because we can't turn over anything that we don't physically possess. Now, if we downloaded, if we downloaded that video, then we own it. And if it's part of a criminal investigation, that would be subject to the same rules of evidence. Most likely, that would not be subject to a FOIA request while that criminal investigation is going on, but I would defer to the the law director on the legality of that.
Okay, and last but not least, the Tasers, the Taser 10s, that's what everybody keeps saying, they're going to buy new Tasers, going to buy new Tasers. When are new Tasers going to be purchased?
So we just purchased Tasers about a year and a half ago. We upgraded. We upgraded to the Taser 7. In 2028, if this contract is approved, approved, we would upgrade to the Taser 10s, which are actually already out now.
So it would be in 28?
2028, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and what does the 10 do that the 7 doesn't do? What was all this about some kind of facial? Is there new enhanced?
The the Taser, if a, does somebody know the 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 updates with the, can you speak to it, Adam? The Taser 10s?
Well, Constance was speaking to it, so I figured everyone must know.
Lieutenant Minner, if you could state your name and address for council and the community?
Yeah, I'm Lieutenant Adam Minner, work for the Knoxville Police Department, 37917. The Taser 10 is individual shots as to where what we have right now, the Taser 7s have a cartridge that allows us to do two deployments with two probes that deploy per deployment. The Taser 10 has 10 individual probes, so theoretically I could just fire one. And if that minimizes the situation that we're in, we could stop there as opposed to having two contacts at the same time. If the situation escalates, then we have additional options there that we can have. But that's the most significant difference there is it goes from two cartridges that can be deployed to 10 individual shots.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
We'll get that in 2028.
In 2028, I think that was the point because everybody was saying you're getting them right now, which.
No, we've already got new Tasers. When was that, Chief? That was 2020, 2020, end of 2022.
And last but not least, anybody that has a cell phone in their pocket is already being surveilled by someone.
Thank you, Councilmember Helsley. Councilmember Parker?
Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to go over the funding really quickly.
Members of the audience, please don't be quiet so Ms. Parker can speak.
It's absolutely fine. They'll quiet down as I continue talking. I just wanted to emphasize again, the increase in cost from our current contracts for these services is around $11 million. So the the idea that we're already paying for a lot of the services at this level is just not true. This absolutely represents a significant increase in the cost that we've been spending. Our Body Cam and Dash Cam contract, a five year contract, less than $5 million, for example. So you take Dash cams and Body cams out of this contract, that still leaves you $22 million. If we look at what money is being used from grants, that's just a little over $2 million. So 25 million is coming from city dollars that we should be clear on. When we look at what grant funding is going towards this, $430,000 of that is ARPA funding. ARPA funding, for those who don't know, is the funding that we got during the pandemic that can be used for housing, for emergency services, for all the needs at the warming center that we've been asking folks to give us some support on. And if we looked at the total number, I wish we had that number, of how much ARPA funding went to KPD during this pandemic versus actual needed services, I think the community would be shocked and saddened. So a couple of things that I wanted to point out. I had some questions that I submitted to the city and I got some answers and some continued concerns. I asked about staffing of the Real Time Information Center and was told it would be provided with civilian staff, not law enforcement trained staff to review the video footage and relay this information to folks in the field. That's not what I have read as best practices for a Real Time Information Center. If we want to use those, you know, lower trained personnel, from my research, it looks like we already have that ability through the Flock camera system, which we have not talked anything about and have not been promised any transparency around those cameras, which I was told has increased to what number, what 38 cameras around? 28 cameras, which are an annual cost of $73,000. My, I have a couple of questions. One would be, why has the city not considered or has the city already used Flock cameras in this way where they can tap into business cameras and have this ability to to have a network of cameras that they use for? Have you used Flock cameras in that way?
Chief.
So Flock, the Flock system is actually license plate readers. So what that does is actually it takes a photograph of the license plate and then trans transitions, transmits that into a numerical and alphabetic code for us to be able to identify that license plate number. It's not a camera system like a traditional, what we would buy with a Real Time Information Center or normal camera feed. Takes that photograph of that license plate to identify the license plate and give us that information, puts that into a a system for us to use.
So you haven't used that that Flock system to connect with business cameras?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't believe it can.
From my research, you can.
Okay, well.
And that would be a much cheaper option to invest in. It doesn't sound like you've investigated many options outside of Axon in this one contract. Did we have any sort of competitive bidding process for these services?
Chief, Mr. Evans, could you speak to the procurement process that we went through?
No, wait, I want my last 10 seconds, please.
Oh, I thought you asked a question.
A couple other things. FUSIS absolutely connects with residential services. We see this out of Nashville. There is a device that has to be purchased to connect those residential cameras to their system. And I have more to talk about.
But that's one of the thing that things that FUSIS does, but it does more.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to talk about it if we could have some time.
Councilmember Fugit.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question that kind of feeds on this question about why now? Why? So I've heard we've had a technology consultant. Is that person here?
I I believe, I believe AV is here in the back.
So I I think it would be helpful to discuss why we, why this recommendation was made to us to bundle? Did that have a pricing benefit? We're getting a lot of questions about how we got here and we hired some people to help us with this procurement process. So if you could explain your thinking, that would be great.
And if you could start by stating your name and address for the record. And you'll need to turn the microphone on. Yeah.
Mayor and council, my name is Abhijit Verakar. I'm the CEO at Verro Advisors, 900 K Street. And we helped the city manage this competitive process and I've got my colleague, Mike Cole, who can explain more about what that decision was led to.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you. My name is Mike Cole. I'm a subject matter expert employed by Verro Advisors. I had a 34 year career in law enforcement, doing everything from officer to chief. Most of my time was spent managing technology for police departments. We were hired to take a look at the records management system when they determined that there was a need to update the legacy system that you currently have. That process was started before we were employed to start looking at the Real Time Information Center. We were quite a bit further into the process of the real time, I'm sorry, the records management system when we were engaged to look at the Real Time Information Center. So we came to the to the decision after doing a request for proposals for doing demonstrations and having your police department and finance department and information technology sit in on demonstrations, it was determined that Axon was the top choice of your organization. Once we determined that, there are two main players in the Real Time Information Center industry, very similar, both of them. There's a huge cost basis foregoing with Axon. Before we recommended that, we asked Axon to do a demonstration and we had employees from the city go to the National Real Time Information Center Conference held in Scottsdale, Arizona last year to look at both products and determine what was what was sufficient for them. We were far into the needs assessment of the Real Time Information Center. So based on the needs assessment that we had done and the information provided from the conference and from the demonstrations, it was determined that Axon met the needs of the police department and by bundling those products together would be a significant savings to the city over the term of the contract. And that was our recommendation.
Thank you. Follow up question, I don't, probably for you, Mr. Evans. The contract that we had for this this software management system, that kind of thing, that keeps being talked about how much less it was than it will be with this. Do you know the last time we put that out to bid? I mean, we've had inflation and cost increases and lots of things. I'm wondering if we had changed nothing, wouldn't our prices have gone up?
Yes, ma'am. In fact, Councilwoman Parker was alluding to this a minute ago, which is, why is everything so much more? And it probably is about about 10 million more or so. But think about it, most of these prices that we have right now for things that we're paying on, a lot of them are pre pandemic. And like this records management system, it's 11, 12 years old, okay? Pre pandemic, I mean, think about a house, think about a car, what they cost then versus what they cost now for almost the same thing. If you break it down to the unit measure like square footage, everything's gone up. Plus, you have enhanced technology and all these things. So the cost has gone up. But we have achieved actually savings through economy of scale with this as far as a procurement is concerned by going off of a national cooperative and bundling all this together.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I only have 32 seconds left. So I think the point I was trying to make is if we put this out to bid and change no vendor, it would be more.
Affirmative. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Singh.
Thank you, Mayor. You guys are fine. I am not an alarmist by any means and I'm definitely not a person who's the slippery slope that this can quickly slide into something else. But on this issue, setting up the infrastructure of the Real Time Center, to me, has the potential for so much intrusion very quickly and very easily. So I am alarmed about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McKenzie.
Chief Noel, just have got text, two yes or no questions. Can this technology tap into a resident's Ring camera or cameras on their home without their permission? Yes or no?
No.
If they were to give permission for you guys to be able to use that footage, would it require an officer coming to their home to get that permission? Yes or no?
For a Ring camera?
Ring camera, if they have a camera on their house.
So so if they have a Ring, one of those cloud based, so I could speak to Ring because that's that's what I have. Ring, you could go on the app or a computer and generate a link and send that to us. But they would, if they, there would be nothing to come to the house for, for one of those cloud, like residential cloud based systems.
Okay. The next question that I have is not a yes or no is, though I did hear from some people from Memphis and in Chattanooga who do have Real Time Crime Centers there, and they did say that in some instances, they felt that it was a deterrent in lowering crime in certain hotspot areas. However, they said that there was a campaign that had maybe had some signage or something in those areas. Would this, would we have signage in those areas that's that would speak to the fact that? that, you know, video surveillance is available or something of that nature?
So the, the, the cameras that we would place would be overt. They would be marked. So they would be clearly, clearly visible. We'd have a police department logo on them. Um, even, um, we're gonna post the locations of the, the cameras that we buy, eventually that we buy, we'll post those locations on our website. As far as signage saying surveillance in progress, I'd, something I would have to talk to my team about, but these cameras would absolutely be overt. Locations would be publicly available on our website.
Thank you.
Councilmember Parker.
Uh, thank you. So, um, I appreciate the speakers who came up and clarified my issue. This was a RFP for a records management system. This was not an RFP for a comprehensive surveillance program. And so we did not get, uh, to, to, to entertain any other options, it does not seem like. Um, we went full speed ahead down, uh, this path, and I do find it concerning. What I've asked for is that we get our, not just our build-out infrastructure in place, but our policies in place before we commit to a contract like this, so that we understand and are in agreement as a community on how, uh, this technology will be used. We've seen Flock cameras, um, introduced into the community with no transparency and no guarantees that there will be any transparency moving forward. That does not start us off on a good footing. I have concerns because of real complaints that have come to me. Real complaints that must be investigated about how people are feeling tracked and feel like their comings and goings in neighborhoods is already being closely monitored by KPD. And that is absolutely a violation of folks' civil liberties in our community. But it's the type of thing that somebody has to complain about. It's the type of thing that, uh, this type of policing can absolutely, uh, go unpunished, essentially. And this is our moment as a city to acknowledge the concerns of our community. I mean, we won't even extend public forum to listen to them all tonight.[751.63][751.63][applause] What message does that show? My goodness. 15 additional minutes of our time, and we won't even give them that. What Nashville did was require a public hearing on these issues. Imagine![769.12][769.12][applause] Oh, my goodness. To want that feedback from your public, to want to hear about how you've been impacted by policing over the last several years, to hear about, you know, instead of saying, "We're already paying for 95% of this," how about we say, "Let's see how this 95% we've already been paying for has impacted our community."[791.12][791.12][applause] How about asking that question?[794.23][794.23][applause] Uh, we just don't seem to have any interest. Why? What I think is, we are the city of Ethel Beck, and we've never learned our lessons. We've never learned our lessons on how to protect, I mean, even our elderly, well-respected Black members of our community. We expect for us to be able to lower the crime rate, that the Black members of our community have to suck it up and not enjoy the civil liberties that others do. Because not only are they listed, not only are we listed as a person of interest in just about every single thing that happens in this city, but we have a police department that's afraid of us, afraid of our babies, our small little Black children, afraid. I've seen it. You had a police chief previously who would admit it.[858.12][858.12][laughter] But we don't give the time to discuss and review these things. That is a police, that is a racist system of policing.[873.01][873.01][applause] Period.[875.01][875.01][applause] When you have disparities, when you have a community experiencing disparities and you don't investigate it and try to work and to resolve it, it's a racist system. And you've shown that you have no willingness or no commitment to trying to change it. Except lipstick on a pig.[900.62][900.62][laughter] So with my last three seconds, I mean, we all, we all walked in here today knowing we would not be listened to, knowing y'all was going past this no matter what we showed up and said. I could have told you I'd witnessed the most horrendous things personally, recorded it on my phone and had a record of it, and you would question it still.[925.68][925.68][laughter] So I'm obviously not in support of this, and I wish that we would commit to some sort of racial impact study.
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Before we move forward.
Uh, next person.
I mean, she knew her right on the dot with me, now see. Right on the dot. I see how it is in here.
Uh, councilmembers, there's more people who signed up, and just for the record, I disagree with everything you just said.
I disagree with everything you've done.
Councilmember McKenzie.
As your time as mayor, how about that?
Hey.
How about that, India? If you want to be rude to me, I can be rude right back to you.
Councilmember McKenzie, you have the floor.
Because I don't see how it matters.
Ms. Parker, you do not have the floor.
Why the person presiding over?[971.12][971.12][laughter] Why the person presiding over our meeting to share their opinions?
Councilmember McKenzie, you have the floor.
It's not appropriate.
Chief, Chief Noel, could you, uh, please talk about the TLC program? I think that there, a lot of people may not be familiar with it. That is, uh, some intentional, uh, community outreach and engagement, um, in communities that are labeled hot zones for violent crime.
Absolutely. So, you know, one thing we know about the, you know, areas that have a, you know, a lot of crime is the most overwhelming majority of people that live in those neighborhoods are good, hardworking people that don't want crime in their neighborhood. So one of the things that we did under the mayor's leadership, working really closely with La Kenya Middlebrook at the Office of, Office of Community Safety, is we, in identifying these small areas with a high concentration of crime, we've worked really, really closely with, with the community, with the administration, with La Kenya Middlebrook, to not, to give those areas extra attention, TLC. So not only is that extra police officers walking in those neighborhoods and building relationships with people, but it's going in those neighborhoods with people like La Kenya Middlebrook, other community volunteers, and identifying problems in those neighborhoods, trash, mattresses laying on the ground, um, you know, lighting issues and other, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm struggling to, to hear a little bit.
Yeah. Audience members, you need to be quiet so we can conduct the city's business. If you're not quiet, you'll be asked to leave. Thank you. Mr., uh, Chief Noel?
What we've seen, the first area we identified in the East District, had a very high concentration of murders and shootings. In 15 months, we have not had one murder or shooting in that area. You know, and some people have talked about overpolicing. What you've seen in that area, arrests, stops have also plummeted at the same time. That's because the officers are getting out and walking and building relationships with the community. We've since expanded that to two other areas, one in Montgomery Village, another one out in, in West Knoxville as well. And we're seeing the same results. And that's one of the reasons in East Knoxville in 2022, if you remember when I was on, brought on board out east, you know, we were experiencing very high, high number of murders. 24 murders in 2022 in East Knoxville. Last year in 2024, we had eight murders. Captain Long, are you here? And Lieutenant Taylor, you stand up? Lieutenant Taylor gets out and walks in that neighborhood in a regular basis, builds relationships with the people. Thank you, Lieutenant. You can sit down now.
Ms. Evans, you're out of order. Be quiet or you'll be asked to leave. I know your name and I hear you talking. You're out of order. You're out of order? Uh, you're right, okay. I'd like you to leave. You're out of order, please leave the room.
Oh, I gotta leave.
Yep, you can leave or you can be arrested. Okay. Councilmember McKenzie?
Yeah, so what I, what I want to say, um...
We'll just wait just a minute.
Can we pause Councilwoman McKenzie's time and back it up, please? I cannot hear.[1190.01][1190.01][applause]
Anyone else, uh, who is interrupting the business of the city, you, you cannot do so. You'll be ruled out of order and asked to leave.[1200.16][1200.16][laughter] Thank you. Councilmember McKenzie, please be quiet. Let councilmembers have their discussion. Councilmember McKenzie, you have the floor.
So, Chief Noel, what I will say is that I actually participated in some of those with, with members of the community, knocking on those doors, the surveys, just asking questions. They were very appreciative, uh, and talked about their concerns and that this was the first time that they had actually seen some intentionality. I'm only speaking to East Knoxville, uh, not Montgomery Village or Western Heights, uh, right about now. But, and it was from seniors to middle-aged people to actually young people. There were a few folks in the neighborhood who had just, who were new residents here, who had said that they had heard some really negative things about East Knoxville, which unfortunately, when people are relocating here, uh, and there are people in this city who actually post very negative things about East Knoxville that make people afraid, but some folks, because of price points, uh, previously, and even still, even though they're, the housing market is very expensive everywhere, in East Knoxville, you can still, for some folks, find something affordable, uh, outside of Section 8. Uh, and they said that they were surprised that it was not as bad as what they had seen and read on those blogs and those types of things. And so I think the intentionality in starting that program and continuing it, uh, really does make a difference. And engaging people from the community, because there were a couple of young folks from the community, young adults who were going out, talking to folks, and of course, we know most of those people that live on those streets. And it wasn't just in the Walter P. area, but the surrounding streets. Uh, a lot of good feedback, uh, on that program. So I do want to commend you for, for being intentional. Uh, I do think that we have seen a lot of improvement in those relationships. And of course, there's always more work that needs to be done.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie.
But, and let me also say this, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Mayor, let me say that the disrespect of people in this room, when this is not allowed at, at county, at county commission, and I do think that we probably need to be a little bit more intentional like county commission, because people do not go to county commission meetings and are disrespectful like this. So I hope that we, the city, will be a little bit, will, will care for people to be intentional about showing respect.
That's not my experience.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder?
I would like for...
They have banners in county commissions.
I would like for, uh, Mr. Johnson to review the rules about the five-minute, because there's a little bit of confusion about that. Mr. Johnson, could you please do that?
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman. Uh, as the mayor mentioned earlier, um, it is the custom to allow members, uh, or response of staff members to go beyond the, the five-minute time. However, um, councilmembers may also, if they would like some additional time, request an additional minute if they would like that. If there's no objection, that, that minute could be granted, or additional time could be granted.
So if a councilmember is asking a question, and by the way, you can start the time on me, and I'm not gonna take my whole five minutes here, sorry. So sorry, 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 Mr. Johnson. I ask you to do two things at once. I also am not good at doing multiple things at once. So if a time, if a councilmember's time is up and a staff member is answering a question and I'm like listening or something to something, someone's answering that person's question, I could say, "I'd like so-and-so to have a minute more time." Or do they request more time? How do we do the additional minute?
The member speak who has been recognized could request the additional time, or you could request it for another member who...
Okay. I, I appreciate some clarity on that. Thank you so much.
And if there's no objection, then no, no vote needs to be taken.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so going back to not hearing from the public, when you go out and speak with the public, you can't take the KPD with you. If they are being harassed by KPD members, they're not gonna tell you in front of the KPD. You know why? Because they're gonna be afraid that officer is gonna come back later when you ain't there and harass them some more. So you can't, you gotta talk to these young people without them around, without anybody official around. Maybe you don't talk to them yourself. Maybe you go through their mentors. Maybe you talk to the, uh, counselors, that boys and girls, and say, "Hey, what are you hearing?" Da-da-da-da-da. Because folks need a safe space. If you go and knock on their door with a police officer, you are not providing a safe space for them. We need, as a council, to provide safe spaces. Because what I'm hearing, when I hear from, 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 uh, youth leaders in, in the community, is that these young people are getting harassed by KPD on a daily basis. That's what I'm hearing. I'm not hearing that folks are coming into their neighborhood, uh, and making them feel safe. They're getting questioned, they're getting patted down, they're getting harassed on a daily basis.
Seriously.
And this is what we have to investigate. And the way we do that is we provide those safe spaces for people to share that information with us. All of our information currently is coming from KPD. And we're just trusting it. Um, I would like to, uh, call someone up. If, is Imani in the room? Imani, could you come up? Because I mentioned earlier, a racial impact study. And folks in this room may not understand what a racial impact study is, but Ms. Imani has worked on this at state level, I believe, and can help us understand how this can help us.[1564.83][1564.83][applause]
If you could state your name and address for the record, please. And turn the microphone on.
Imani Knoxville, Tennessee. So, uh, racial, um, impact statement is basically a study or analysis that will outline the potential effects of a bill funding, um, resolution or anything, how it would either decrease or increase disparities on different communities, using the data, also showing distinct differences in different, um, demographic groups. And it could be used in any type of funding, bills or anything. And also, I just want to make a correction that national trends, crime rate is down. The FBI came out with that. So this is not a unique thing, and you're also discrediting the work of some of the groups in this room that have decreased that crime rate. Um, so that's all I have for the racial impact. And I think that... You should be forgiving this funding. You should want to know how it impacts every community. You do not want to put in policy or funding or money that disproportionately targets one group of people over another. You say you're here for safety. This is, this shouldn't be a hard study. It needs to be independent. No one that has any ties to law enforcement or anyone else in this, on this council. It shouldn't be that hard to do. If you really care about it being about safety and being transparent, you should do a racial
Thank you, Imani. And I believe that's something, you know, the federal funding that needs to be, uh, spent by June of this year or whatever year, um, that's the, we can use that funding for the study, to set us up, uh, to get the, the, the program in place, uh, that Knoxville needs. That's a more just approach, uh, to a policing. That would be my recommendation and what I'd like to see moving forward.[1710.47][1710.47][applause]
Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to recap the actual component of funding that we've talked about. Today, if you need access to footage from a crime after the fact, you can access that with the willing participation of the owner of the camera. Is that right?
Correct.
This doesn't give you any additional access, any type of different access than that other than, um, direct access to it as opposed to going to the site, asking for the manager of the convenience store or wherever, um, waiting on the file, taking it back, reviewing it, et cetera, correct?
Correct.
So, in essence, this is technology that allows you to access existing information that you can already access right now.
Correct.
Okay. So I think there's legitimate concerns in this community. I think there are legitimate concerns that I've listened to over the years. I think it's, it's fair to say, not really sure what this looks like 20 years from now. Um, I do think that there's good oversight in the multiple ways, every year, multiple times a year for this council, either through budgetary process or other means, to intervene when this is the case, just like we can, intervene in policing like we have in the past. When that was necessary, we have done that. And I think there are people beyond the community in this room that are not just in the police that have made an impact. As mentioned, it's been a community-wide effort to reduce... As mentioned, it's been a community-wide effort to reduce violent crime in this community. So this is really, again, for the public, there's been a lot of misinformation, there's been a masterful justice manipulation in this past weekend of intentional misinformation. It's been sadly impressive. With that said, there are real concerns, and many people have raised those, and I've tried to raise those tonight. What I do want to make sure is very clear, is that this is access to information faster using technology that KPD has right now. It is voluntary. There's nobody piping in to ring cameras involuntarily, there's nobody placing up cameras, nondescript cameras around the community. These are all things, by the way, we've all had to ask and answer, and I wouldn't be in favor of any of those either. That's not what we're doing, and that's not what KPD has proposed. It is a lot of money, and it's not the only amount of money that we have to do things. Many of us were at the warming centers, many of us serve in many roles that help reduce these numbers about violence and homelessness. So I want to pause for a little bit of the "nobody cares about any stuff" kind of arc of the commentary that I've heard, and there's been intentional misinformation.
Members of the audience, please, please let Mr. Vice Mayor Smith has the floor.
Masterful amount of mischaracterization and information. So I just want the public to be aware of the, there's a lot of times when there's a new thing, people don't necessarily know, including myself, what exists now. And I think if you've listened earnestly, as we, at least if I have, and studied this and asked a lot of questions and talked to a lot of people, the difference between what is being proposed and what exists now is mainly speed of access to the same technology and the same video access that they have now. It literally is. You can make it something else, but that's literally what this is. It's a technology advancement that allows for quick access to the existing video. I just want to say it over and over, because there's been a lot of hyperbole.
You're out of order. If you're speaking from the audience, you're out of order.
And there are real concerns, and I think some of them have been raised by my colleagues and by the members of the community. And so I feel good about the oversight involved in this. I feel good about the progress that this entire community has made in terms of not only reducing the amount of violent crime, but also doing so with reduced stops and not over-enforcing. There are mistakes, for sure, but the idea that we're headed in the wrong direction in terms of the little data of what's happening in our community, in terms of public safety, is to look at numbers and ignore them. So I think there's good oversight here, this has been well scrutinized, and I plan to support it.
Can I add one thing?
Chief, go ahead.
Since I've been here the last two and a half years, we have consistently shown that we're adding more regulation at KPD, not taking it away. We're adding more oversight at KPD and not taking it away. We've added the Office of Professional Standards. We've recently hired an auditor, a civilian auditor, to go through and look at use-of-force body-worn camera and use-of-force...
You're out of order. You're out of order. Leave the room. Leave the room, you're out of order. Thank you. Chief Noel?
We have added an auditor, not only to review use-of-force cases, but to go look and review random body-worn camera video to make sure our officers are upholding the standards of the Knoxville Police Department. So we have consistently shown that we're going in that direction. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Thanks, Mayor. And to repeat what was said as he was leaving the room, is that your own staff, your own officers ran off the head of Professional Standards at KPD. I wanted to pipe in, because all of this misinformation, misinformation is so frustrating. There is an $11 million increase in the services that we were previously contracted for. $11 million. And what the response from council is, well, it's essentially the same thing. I bet every department in the city would love that level of flexibility when they're making their purchases. Man, we used to have this one service that we could use, but it's gone up. The price has gone up exponentially. No worries, no worries whatsoever. Well, we're not even sure, you know, what the negative impacts can be. As long as crime's coming down, we don't care how the impacts are on the civil liberties of our residents. That is always the balance that has to be made. That's my background as a human rights advocate. That's my life's work. And every government has to weigh the interest of what it is to maintain a free society, and the other interests that we have as a community, lowering crime rates, making sure of public safety, all these things. And we could build a wall around the city, put a camera on every corner, put some really harsh measures in place to make sure there's no crime. But societies throughout history have decided that they would rather maintain a free society than a completely violence-free society, right? And what we are saying to you in the black community, well, some of us, is that you're not hearing us about the negative impacts. You're hearing others in the black community about the positive impacts, but what about those who are being negatively impacted? Not hearing from us. And so the message becomes, also, the unhoused community. I mean, that's where conversation started, was putting cameras down around Broadway and around the homeless campments and all of that. And so we talk about when those cameras catch a crime, but we don't talk about how that technology might be used to abuse the rights of our residents. Have no interest, no interest whatsoever, in talking about how technology we are acquiring could potentially be used to abuse the rights of our residents. No interest. And so that's why I'm one of those people who echo what the community's saying, that y'all don't care. That's the message being sent out. I'm not saying you don't care because you're supporting this tonight. I'm saying you don't care because you won't even listen before you support it. You won't even call for a public hearing before you support it. You won't even allow three additional speakers before you support it. I'm asking for a little bit of effort, not a whole lot. I'm not even asking for you to not even put a program like this in place. I'm asking for you to put policies in place that protect our residents and how this is, how this program's carried out. And we're committing to the contract before the policies are developed, even though I've been asking for these policies for two years. Two years. I've been asking for a workshop on a surveillance ordinance. You wouldn't give it to me, Tommy. Wouldn't give it to me. Oh, oh, you say it's a vote from everybody. I forget. What about a dinner? You could have given me a dinner. Nothing. So you've shown what you're interested in, you've shown where your priorities are, and the community hears it. You have to accept it. There was so little being asked of you tonight, and you couldn't even do that. It's shameful. It's shameful. And that, and this is the bad policing, too. To give us a date of January 15th and say we have to meet that date, that's an example of that bad policing.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Vice Mayor? Seeing no further lights on, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 7-2. Councilmembers, do you want to have a brief recess? Let's just finish up. No, let's just finish up. Okay. Okay, next item, please.
12A is an ordinance approving the request of Knoxville Habitat for Humanity for an amendment to the East City Sector Plan from civic and institutional to medium-density residential property located at 4325 Pinehurst Drive, 4th District.
Motion made to approve. Councilmembers, there are three people signed up to speak in favor of this.
Are you guys okay with me saying something?
No, you may not. You're out of order.
I think some people are okay with it, and you're not.
You may not speak. You're out of order. You're out of order, you need to leave the podium. You can sit back down. You are out of order, I'm asking you to leave. You can leave voluntarily, or you'll be escorted out by the police officers. Okay. Drew Harper is signed up to speak in favor of item 12A. Mr. Harper, please come to the podium, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council. Whatever your name is, you can leave, or you'll be arrested and leave.
There should not be this much division.
Councilmembers, we're, members of the audience, we are continuing to conduct the city's business. If you're interrupting the city's business, you'll be asked to leave, and if you choose not to leave, you'll be required to leave by our police officers. Thank you. If you're having a conversation, you need to take it outside, Ms. Parker and your other person there. If you're going to have a conversation, take it outside this room, so we can continue the city's business. Mr. Harper? Mr. Harper, go ahead and turn your mic back on and speak to the item before city council. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Drew Harper, I live at 4318 Washington Pike, Apartment 101. I am speaking in support of the sector plan change relating to the larger project of Habitat for Humanity, building homes in my neighborhood. I am vice president of Yes Knoxville, which exists to promote housing options, transportation options, and better community spaces, better public spaces. I'm also a neighbor to where this project is on Washington Pike. It's a very diverse neighborhood as far as housing types. I live next to duplex, there's a school across the street, I live in a fourplex, and I am speaking to support...
Ma'am, you're out of order. Please be quiet, or you'll be asked to leave. Mr. Harper, just take a moment here.
Release the footage and also build these duplexes.
Just take, thank you, you can pause this five minutes. Okay. Mr. Harper, you can continue, we can hear you now.
What was I saying? Oh, it's a good project. It's in the neighborhood, it's win-win-win, it's done by Habitat, so it is, it's market-rate housing, but offered to people under specific circumstances that will allow them to build wealth, put down roots in the community. I really can't imagine a better project. It is on the site of a Quaker church that is closing, and the church, as it was in the process of closing, wanted to do something positive. So I hope we can all be more like the Quakers and be more welcoming to our neighbors and peace-loving and justice-oriented, and that means real material change, such as building homes for people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak in favor of item 12A is Ellen Zaviska. Ellen Zaviska, are you still here? Okay. If she's not present, the next person signed up to speak in favor of this item is Suzanne If you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, you'll have up to five minutes.
My name is Suzanne Stevens. I live at 3930 Valley View Drive in 37917. I live in the Alice Bell area where Habitat is requesting rezoning on Pinehurst for the development of 12 duplexes. As you all well know, we have a housing shortage in our city and county, and some of the ways you have been addressing it is with changes in zoning, which allows more density and supporting affordable housing. In the past few years, our Alice Bell area has seen large apartment complexes being built. This provides much-needed housing that is critical in addressing the housing shortage. However, it creates a more transitory community. At the same time, I realize it is becoming more difficult to build individual homes because of the cost and the growing scarcity of available land. And so I was very excited to learn of Habitat's request and proposal in our neighborhood, because it is another piece, another step, that helps address the housing shortage, specifically for those who typically do not qualify for home ownership. This proposal is such a good way forward to increasing housing for those who need it, because it enables people to buy their own home. Through home ownership, people are investing in their future, building equity, and even overcoming poverty. Through home ownership, families stabilize their lives, they are rooted and connected in a more permanent way in our community, and our neighborhood is stronger, safer, and a better place to live with their presence. Because Habitat homebuyers are required to perform sweat equity, these homebuyers are well-equipped to know how to take care of a home and how to manage their finances. I see the Pinehurst request as a welcome addition to our neighborhood, providing an alternative to rental housing for people who want to become a part of our community. I ask and urge you to support whatever changes are needed to make this Habitat development a reality, and I think our late president, Jimmy Carter, would approve of this. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Councilmembers, that concludes, the people have signed up to speak on this item. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, well, one, I'd like to make a motion to combine 12A, B, and C.
Motion's been made to consolidate items 12A, B, and C, has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments on that motion to consolidate? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now back to...
Yeah, and just in closing, just want to say thank you to Mr. Terry. I know you guys have had to come to a couple of different meetings. This is the first reading, we will have a second meeting, and I just say, I appreciate the speakers, and I appreciate, Mr. Collins is here, he was able, this is one of the reasons that this was postponed previously. Mr. Collins and the Alice Bell community provided a platform for a two-hour meeting with the community, where members of the community were able to get questions answered with members of Habitat, and then, of course, there have been some ongoing conversations with both sides of the group since. And then, just in summary, I would like to thank Ms. Stevens for bringing up President Carter. As many might know, he is on his way or already in Washington DC. He's actually one of the only presidents I've ever interacted with before, and from my home state, so happy to approve this in his honor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryder. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, just to briefly underline, it's good to hear Mr. Collins' effort, not surprising, but that the neighborhood and Habitat got together and talked all this out, it makes it a lot easier for us up here, and so I'm glad that the process played out. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights on, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, please.
12D is an ordinance to change the base tenant classification of property located at 5941 Kingston Pike from CG3 to CG1, District White Realty and Service Corporation, applicant 2nd District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. On to public forum. We have five people, no, four people signed up for public forum. First is Rick Roach. Mr. Roach, are you present? Is Mr. Roach present? Apparently not. Next is Brandon Mishlik. Is Brandon Mishlik present? Next is someone who's, the name is listed as Mal, M-A-L. Is Mal present? Okay. Next is John Zieda. Mr. Zieda, please come to the podium, you'll have up to five minutes to address council. Thank you.
I am back again.
If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
The name is John Zieda, and I live in West Knoxville. I lived in Knoxville 51 years, I'm 61 years old. I never thought I'd be here for these topics. Our fire department will go into businesses, every time I come over here, this is what I discuss. I'm not crazy, my mind is with me. It's a crazy accusation, and I... It's a crazy accusation, and I know it. That's the beauty of it all. The fire department will go into these businesses. Planned Parenthood Clinic was burned by the fire department, and I can prove it, and half the people over here knows that I can prove it. Parkway Hotel was burned by the Knoxville Fire Department. And there's at least another 10 businesses locally that was burned by the Knoxville Fire Department. They will go into these businesses in the middle of the night, hook them up with incinerating devices that are connected to the gas meter, the propane meter that's outside. They will connect to it, burn, and put the devices on the windows, and the flames will be coming out of the windows. And the population, the public sees the flames roaring out the glass. What does the average citizen do? They call the 911. Nobody would think it was the fire department that burned it. And why I'm here today, one more time, Planned Parenthood was burned by the Knoxville Fire Department. I can prove it. Why I'm here tonight, Gatlinburg, 2016, they said two teenage boys, they caused that fire. It's a lie. It was caused by the Gatlinburg Fire Department, and the Knoxville Fire Department went there to help them put it out. But chances are strong, the Knoxville Fire Department knows the truth, what happened over there. Here is the picture at the Parkway, you people are not going to be able to see this. This is on the roof of the Parkway Hotel, after the fires were removed. After the flames was removed, you could see a device over there. That same device is right here at the Gatlinburg Forest. These devices were tied to, of all things, the trees. I know it's crazy, and I know most, maybe half you people don't believe me, but this is exactly what happened in Gatlinburg, 2016. Here's another picture of that device. And I know, without you people coming over here to take a look at these pictures, and they're not big enough for you all to see it. But here's one, and you people got your phones. You look at the 2016 Gatlinburg Welcome Center, look at that picture that's burned, edit that picture with your phones, play with it for a while. You will start to see the device that's connected to the 2x4 that held that welcomed sign to Gatlinburg. And what beats it all, there's a propane natural center, propane center, natural gas center, 100 yards away from that Welcome Center sign. Nobody burned it, this is, when the government of Gatlinburg burns the city of Gatlinburg, this is treason. Nobody can hear, sit over here and ignore it. It is treason when our government is burning our city. It is part of the US territory. So it is part of our government. We cannot let Gatlinburg get away with it, and the Knoxville Fire Department needs to be, the population need to go into that building on Huron Street and take a look at these It's strung up, one more thing, Ask for a Buddy's Barbecue Fire. They will string up these devices on cable, and they will burn it. If anybody's here interested in these pictures, let me know, because I got copies at home. I don't mind to leave them here. Here's the picture. There's the picture at the Welcome Center. And that gray is actually the device.
Thank you, Mr. Zieda, your time is up. Councilmembers, without objection, this meeting is adjourned.